This meeting will now come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Binsbacher.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Potena.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
And Councilmember Dunn.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of August 13th, 2019. We have one item on our study session agenda this evening, and it is joint presentation regarding the interests of the United Phoenix Firefighters Association Local 493 and the Peoria City Council. And I will turn it over to City Manager Jeff Tyne to kick it off.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate this opportunity. So this is the beginning of our formal process for negotiations with the Peoria Firefighters Association. And for us, we'll, we'll teach you a little bit about what that process looks like. But we're very excited to have the, the good conversations with our firefighter association. We, of course, are very proud of all of our firefighters, captains, engineers, but also enjoy a really good working relationship with them, with the association as well. And so with that, without further ado, I'm going to pass this over. First with us, we have Christine Nickel, who is our Acting Human Resources Director, and DeeDee Gates, our HR manager. And also, of course, she'll introduce Hunter Clare, who is the President, Chapter President of the United Phoenix Firefighters Association Local 493. So without pass it to Christine first.
Thank you, Mr. Tyne, and good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening to discuss the meet and confer process. As Mr. Tyne mentioned, DeeDee Gates is to my left. She's the HR manager and the lead negotiator in the meet and confer process. DeeDee will be assisted by Camille Russell, HR supervisor, and Debbie Pierce, HR consultant through the process. On tonight's agenda, we will provide an overview of the timeline and the meet and confer process. We will also present the city council's interest, and then we will hear from PFFA, and they will present their interest to city council. There are no federal or state laws that require the city of Peoria participate in the meet and confer process or recognize employee associations. Although not required by law, the city of Peoria does have a meet and confer process that was created by city council and enacted by city code, covering wages, hours, and working conditions. Throughout the meet and confer process, city council provides direction and indicates priorities to city staff and negotiators. City staff is responsible to negotiate on behalf of city council and explore the best avenues to achieve interest of both city council and the employee association. The city of Peoria has four employee associations. This graph represents the expiration date of the Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU, between the city of Peoria and the employee associations. I'm going to do just a little overview of each of the groups. PFFA, or Phoenix Firefighters Association Local 493, and I think I should have said "United" in front of that, representing approximately 181 employees. And the topic of discussion this evening, the current MOU expires at the end of this fiscal year. COPS, or City of Peoria Police Supervisors, representing approximately 25 police sergeants. The current four-year MOU is in effect until July for, or, I'm sorry, excuse me, June 30th, 2021. Peoria Police Officer Association, representing approximately 153 police officers. The current three-year MOU is in effect for PPOA until June 30th, 21, similarly to COPS. And AFSME, or American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, representing approximately 470 employees, with a four-year MOU in effect until June 30th, 2022. As you can see from this slide, the city and the employee associations have been very successful in reaching agreements for multi-year MOUs with staggering end dates. Tonight, we will hear from PFFA, and as I mentioned on the previous slide, representing approximately 181 firefighters, engineers, and captains. The current three-year MOU expires at the end of this fiscal year, June 30th, 2020. It is our hopes that we will conclude the meet and confer process by November 2019 with a fully executed MOU that takes effect July 1st, 2020. And the timing is important for future budget planning. Sorry about that. Well, it was fabulous, let me tell you. Yep. So we will skip that, and we'll come back if we can get it. I'd like to take a moment to review the meet and confer process and timeline. We are early in the formal steps, with the process initiated on August 5th, well ahead of the September 1st deadline that is outlined in code, with PFFA submitting their interest to city council. We would like to acknowledge and thank PFFA for their promptness and professionalism in submitting their interest to city council. Tonight's meeting is the next step in the process, and designed, as Mr. Tyne mentioned, to let PFFA personally present their interest to city council. No action is required on your part this evening. Within 10 business days, we will begin the formal negotiations with hopes to wrap up in November, on November 12th, with our final presentation to city council. If an agreement is not reached by November, either side may request mediation. And if there's still not an agreement after mediation, we will return to city council for further direction. And as a reminder, from this date forward, city code prohibits discussion between the city council and PFFA on interests or on the meet and confer process until the meet and confer process has concluded. Next, I will review the city council's interest in the meet and confer process. First and foremost, high-performing employees. We have heard from city council that as the employer of choice, the council recognizes the value of highly skilled employees. It is of utmost importance that employees are well-trained and competent, the best and the brightest, and we believe that's what we have. We also believe it's very important that we remain fiscally prudent while sustaining core services. We believe that the city has, has maintained a competitive placement in the market, and we will continue to review information to make sure that we have the most up-to-date and relevant information throughout the process so that decisions can be made on the relevant data, and so that the city is able to work within its financial means. The process and our relationships are also very important. We want them transparent, with integrity, regular communication, mutual respect. We expect that we will have positive interactions and problem-solving opportunities. The city and PFFA have a fabulous working relationship, and the preliminary conversations related to the meet and confer process have been mutually beneficial. And lastly, it's important that we have multi-year agreements that have clear and concise MOUs. Multi-year agreements offer stability for budget forecasting and allow the employees to move forward while providing excellent customer service. Next, we'd like to ask Captain Hunter Clare to present PFFA's interests.
Oh, sorry. I'm loud anyways. I don't know why they have me use this. So, Mayor, Council, City Manager Tyne, HR Department, first off, we appreciate you all having us in here. It's nice to be back on the city ground after a short leave of absence for a duty accident. So it's good to be here. What Chad is passing out right now is not our actual presentation. This is just the opening proposals that should have been emailed over to you, but just in case you didn't get it from everything, we wanted to make sure that you had a hard copy. It's nothing different than what we submitted through the city clerk's office, as required by our city code. Before we jump in and get started, we'd just like to thank everybody and really lean out here and thank DeeDee on, on our relationship that we've had. We negotiated with her the last time, and it was the first time that our negotiating group had come to a three-year contract with the city of Peoria. So, you know, we definitely have tremendous faith in her and belief in what she brings from the system forward, and we look forward to, you know, striking a long-term deal again, if at all possible. So, you know, with that, we have been good partners with the city. We look to continue to, and all, we have a lot of the same interests that they do, and that's not only attracting the best qualified candidates, but retaining them for a long period of time, you know, so. As we come in, our goals, I'm not going to go through everything up there, but they are outlined, but our biggest thing when we come in is we've agreed to that there's 13 valley cities that we're going to compare against, okay? Ranging from the East Valley to the West Valley. We have, in prior years, taken out some of the cities that we had in there, and some of the fire districts that have a little different model than what we have. So we've, we've narrowed it down to 13 comparative cities. They will come up and kind of tell you where roughly they're at. And our goal for attracting firefighters around the valley is to be competitive in the top range of maximum salary, because when employees look to come in to an area, they don't look at the average where I can be. They don't necessarily look at the start, and they look at what their long-term earning potential is when they stay with a career. With our firefighters here in the city of Peoria, our average career span right now is 27.3 years. So you're not talking about employees that are coming here, leaving, and going other directions. We have employees that are committed to working for this place for a long period of time, you know, and pushing the, the brand forward that we believe in. You know, you all have heard me talk over the years about those six-block letters. We do believe in those, because our employees don't just work here. They live here, they pay taxes here, and they utilize those services. This is truly a place where we live, grow, and play, you know? And we want to commit to that and bringing those people in that want to be here. I mean, over the past years, with the people that we have attracted in with the last contract that we were able to get, we had a lot of East Valley people that, when they came to our city, have now moved in and been a part of our city, because after they were serving our citizens and realizing the resources that they have, they committed and moved into this area. So we're very happy to have more than a 50% rate of our organization that lives here, pays its taxes, and plays at the same time. With that, we'd like to be competitive in an overall package, because sometimes it's not just that salary, it's some of the little things that come into play, especially with some of the exposures that we have over the time as firefighters in the area, and some of the struggles that we face later. So we do appreciate what the city has come up with in some creative ways that we've been able to come to, to find some little things that aren't necessarily cost issues all the time. Some of them are a minor cost issue to try to play it in that says, hey, this isn't just about overall being topped out, it's about the whole package of what you get when you come and you work for those six-block letters. Outside of that, the 457s and RHS is tend to be a very large thing for us. The reason being is that we aren't social security eligible. You'll see me talk about that later. So the city doesn't pay that 6.2% into for our employees because they're not there, but a lot of our employees outside of that range do work other jobs. They create that thing to provide the family and the life that they want for that area. Well, in the state of Arizona, with that area, with the federal government is, once you have that, you're looking at a reduction, if you're paying into social security in your other job for a career at that point, of a reduction of anywhere from 60 to 85% of what you're going to accrue. So they call that the windfall penalty that comes into play. So even our members that have that, they have a reduction out of that system. So that can be a little bit tough when you're looking at your long-term career after serving. Outside of that, we def, healthcare is a big thing, language changes, and then we've always asked and pushed for that move through, away from pattern bargaining. I think we did a good job with that, you know, last time, and addressing the needs of what the firefighters have are different than what our police officers have, which are different than what our regular city employees have. So these are our comparable cities, in case that we have led it down to. I apologize for my 16 comparable. You can see, we're actually at 13, and we are one of those 13. So the color code, not to throw you off there, but anybody that is in red and blue, those are the cities that are currently going to be going to negotiations at the exact same time as us, okay? So all of those cities are currently up for contract next year, so we want to make sure that we're more, more competitive to draw people away. So everybody's going to be, you know, positioning a little bit to make sure that their city is the place where that next batch of firefighters wants to go, wants to put in for that petition, wants to stay for the next 27-plus years. Our black, the ones that are lined in black, which you'll see is Gilbert and Scottsdale, those are our departments that are already signed in, they're locked in, they don't have anything coming up in the future, they've got their pay schedule lined out, and they don't have a negotiation on the near horizon that we see coming in. Our two green departments, which is Mesa and Phoenix, they just finished negotiations, actually, as of this year. So unfortunately, with some of our times, and we knew that we had that constraint, DeeDee and I agreed that, hey, we were going to be able to get some numbers out, but we wanted to do point out that we can only get, capture a snap point at that, you know, at that moment in time to provide to you as to what people are making, but there have been adjustments. So Mesa and Phoenix have just signed two- and three-year deals to move themselves forward, and they will move through that area. So their, their fee schedule will be a little bit different than ours. The blue, I'd like to point to, and this is something innovative that some of the smaller outside of departments have done, and it would be one of our things that's in our proposal that you would all see there, is these are departments that have reached out, they are negotiating this year, but they put in a setup for their market analysis to keep them competitive with the other fire departments, that keeps them in either the upper 75 percentile or top four of the matching valley departments in either total compensation or in salary. So it's just a different way of looking at it, instead of pushing for certain types of COLAs, what they have is an automatic setup that flows along, and it would just move so it can shorten or create a smaller COLA every year, because what you're trying to do is keep yourself in that upper 25% for the market to attract people away. So that's a breakdown there. As we go for a quick bar breakdown, the first thing that we want to reach out to is just say, again, being taxpayers in your city, we're very proud of your leadership and what you've been able to do. City Manager Tyne has done a heck of a job over there, been dealing with him since he was in finance, moved up as being our boss over our deputy city manager, and I think we've, we've grown a great relationship coming into that point. But even through the ups and downs of our market, you as our city council, our leadership, they've done a great job of keeping our city stable and viable in those areas. We audit the city every year just to make sure that they're at, using our CAFR reports and pushing through, and some of those areas that we've been able to push in, which has allowed us to attract great businesses, right? Build beautiful parks for our kids to enjoy, you know, back a lot of our entities that are in there, refurbish some of our downtown area, and really make it a place where you want to spend time with your family, has all become because of our leadership that we have in there. And, you know, we believe in that. We want to be a part of those areas. Some of the things that we'd like to point in there, that are, are areas that we would like to kind of focus on is, again, the no social security and then the no 401A percentage packs by the city, which is something that we do do for our managers, and we'd just like to look at something for that with our group coming in, for the fact that that's part of the area that does that gap in between when our people retire until they're Medicare or Medicaid eligible, as we get in there. Our firefighters do retire a little bit earlier. The reason being is it's hard to see a 60, 65-year-old firefighter on your truck. I'm not saying it's impossible, but it definitely can be a little bit rough, you know, with the calls, that volume that we have going on there, and pushing through those areas. So our members do leave because of the injuries that we do incur, the exposures that we have, and, you know, some of the trauma of the things that you do see. You know, we see some of the worst parts of, of the area, and we deal with people on their worst day. So some of that stuff has accumulative exposure over a career, so they don't end up staying quite as long. As for the last two things, we definitely want you to believe that we're just not out here for ourselves. Your firefighter group from the city of Peoria has been sitting on the front line since day one of pension reform that's gone on. We were back there in the 2001 bubble burst. We were again around during the pension, or during the recession from 2007 to 2009. We were the first ones sitting on the lines in 2012, when we created the initial pension reform, to push in to make sure that it was a long-term thing. And we were there again in 2017 with the new tiers that we've created to put those stuff in place. We're committed to making this a viable resource that gives the top, top-quality service to our citizens, but has our city on the map of that place where everybody wants to stay. Number one is where we want to be, and that's where we're going to stay with the resources that we have. So we aren't just out for ourselves, we really are out for making sure that our city continues to stay the place that we can attract the best coming in. Our membership is an all-hazards fire department, and a lot of people wonder, well, what does that mean? Well, that means that we provide every single service that you can. We only don't have one team in the entire valley here, and we don't have an ARF team, so we don't have a special unit that is just designed for the airports, because we don't currently have our own airfield that's in the city of Peoria anymore. But we do have the first due truck, which means the first truck that would respond on any type of emergency that was to happen at the Glendale Air Park, and that's Engine 194. Because of our system, that's a little bit more unique than maybe some of the other systems out there, is there are no borders for fire trucks and the paramedics that come on those trucks around the valley. Closest truck goes. So that means that our units aren't just responding to take care of our Peoria citizens, they're responding in to assist our sun-city neighbors over into Glendale, Phoenix, Goodyear, and, as we recently know, as far out as Surprise to take care of issues that come up in those areas. We have been all around the valley. We do have all-hazards teams that come in to take care of those, and what that allows us to do is it allows us to not have to have as much staffing as would be needed for the amount of call that we have, call volume that we have. So a crazy thing to think about is just in the city of Peoria, as busy a city as we are, right, is almost 70, we, we run 70% of our calls in our city, but we are covered 30% of the time by outside agencies coming in. Some of our first dues are being covered by even more. So it shows how great this mutual aid system is, because if we were to have to create more to cover that, we'd be looking at quite a large increase to our service that we have and our force that we'd be there, which would be a lot of draw in the city. So with those things, we have a great, beautiful lake, we have boat operators, people that can go and dive, swim, pull people out if we're in a drowning situation, take care of fires on the lake, at the harbor, anywhere through there. We have wildland teams that have been able, extremely busy this season around our city. We've had, unfortunately, a horrific wildland season, which means all those open areas around our city have been burning left and right. We got all that rain. We got all that rain, and now everything's dried up with the heat coming in. It seems like we're running at least one a day that's coming out. I know you get our reports that are coming in, some of them lasting multiple days, utilizing a range of resources. We have helicopter operators which allow us to make rescues on all mountains, not just the ones in our city, but all the way around, being pulled into Phoenix, up north and out of the way to rescue hikers that may get lost in those areas. Obviously, we have a hazmat team that's high-profile at this point in time with what we're dealing with, but they are a regional resource. That means that they can actually not just go in the region here, but they can be deployed nationwide with the type of grant that we have them on, and they're required to be in that area. We have a lot of other activities that we've moved into too, such as community paramedicine. As we go down, you'll see the largest scope of practice for firefighter paramedics in Arizona. What does that mean? That means that our paramedics that are on our fire trucks are able to provide more life-saving medications and skill sets to give our citizens, when they're having a medical emergency, the best chance for survival or recovery from that area. We are proud to be a premier agency in the state of Arizona, which means that we have some of the strictest regimented for not only making sure that we're accountable training-wise, but make sure that our skills are up to par, and we're meeting all the goals, whether it's a state or city or federal agency that we're playing with there to, to meet those guidelines. We also are on the cutting edge of working with departments like the University of Arizona and their medical department. When they come up with an innovative, we're one of the first departments to be in there, and that's a thanks to Deputy Chief Jim Bratcher, who pushes the envelope to make sure that our citizens are the safest that they can possibly be in here, and that our medics are trained to the highest level and held accountable every day for what's going on. We've also expanded services in the last little bit. We have alternative response vehicles, because we realize that the 911 system is being taxed at a regular rate. So do we always have to have a four-person paramedic call on everything? You know, for the drownings, for the heart attacks, for the strokes, for those types of things? Absolutely. That's where it's been shown that the four-person response model with two paramedics being there is the most effective in giving people a chance to live, survive, recover, and leave the hospital. But we do have some low-acuity calls that come into play, people that might have some issues that aren't as high, maybe lift assists, things like that, which I know people don't think that the 911 system does get utilized at, but it does, because there are people. You have, we do have an elderly population, we have people that don't know what to do, they fall down, they can't help their loved one up. They call us. Instead of dispatching that unit out and having them there, we've been creative and responsible with the resources that you've given us to create two-person units that are able to go there, evaluate, and assist them in that situation. If it was to become more detrimental, we can upgrade the call and get them the appropriate service that they need. Outside of that, we've worked in an ambulance service, which has been phenomenal for our citizens. It's kept that continuity of care moving forward to create, again, best possible outcomes for our people in those medical emergencies. As far as that moving down, our Peoria firefighters' charity is in our association. They're one and the same. That means our firefighters and their days off and what they do. I told you, we believe in those six-block letters that are there, and we show that every day. I would challenge you to find any other organization that spends as much time in our community, making it better, committed to our city, and finding the, the needs that we have, and pushing to make those better and fill that gap with our time off. That's not our time on duty, that's our time off duty giving back there. We have reading programs, swimming programs, smoke detector walks, summer camps, CPR in the schools, college scholarships. That's just to name a few of the things that we do day in and day out. You all have been a part of some of our breast cancer walks, you've been a part of our neighborhood get-to-know-things when we're doing pancake breakfast and pushing those things out, or you've been a part of our senior or our, you know, our family programs at the Christmas time, any of the holiday seasons, to make sure that our in-needs families are taken care of. Outside of that, we push to make sure our kids are good in school. Our firefighters are there not only as the truck to do displays, but on their days off, volunteering their time to make sure that they know that a fire pal is there, that there's people to help them answer questions, get them over bowling, and push them to just be good people in the community and make it out there in life and provide something back. We do have a true commitment to our city. We believe in that every way. And we ask that we have the commitment back, and we feel that we have. So that's why we're looking to make a long-term deal again here. We really hope that we can come to some of those areas. We have a great working team that we have coming into there. I will put our ask up, so you guys can kind of see where we're coming from, but, oh, these are some of our paid deficits, I'm sorry. I added a slide. And just so you had a rough idea as to where we are, because we know that we're not always going to be the top agency. As much as we would like to be there, we believe that we're the number-one department out there, and we also know that that's not always realistic or necessarily the most financially place to be. But where we don't want to be is in the middle, because we aren't a middle organization. We aren't a middle city, right? We're a city that has the most to offer everybody that comes in. So those are some of our areas when we come as a department at whole. So you can see how much we're ahead of the bottom. This is of max salary that we're looking at, and then where we are from behind the top. We realize those areas. As you can see, the areas that we go down on our firefighters, engineers, and captains, it varies. So our engineers are a little bit off of where we need to be, but this is just taking those numbers, and we feel that we can make a good chunk out of that, again, to keep our people here for that elongated goal and providing the best service possible. So every political thing has an ask, so as we sit before you here to consider when you go in before we come back with stuff, is just where we'd like to be. We'd like to be competitive in that annual salary. And when we talk about that, again, max salary, because that's where people determine where they're going to stay for that long term, you know? Unfortunately, our city can be a very competitive area, and we create high-quality employees, right? We've lost some great people to other cities because we create the best here, and there's not always the most opportunities at the top. Same thing being said in our department. We'd like to keep those people for the entirety of that 27-plus-year career, and push them through the ranks so they can raise their family here and continue to give back, hopefully bring second, third, maybe even fourth-generation firefighters into our area. As for advanced programs, the reason why I do look to the medical a lot is just because our firefighters in the valley, it has been shown, not just in the valley but in the country, is that in a lot of cancer races, we're at 50% greater risk of occurring cancer and other medical problems that are coming up. With some of our mental conditions that have come in, with the PTSD stuff that's going, we're, we found good ways through our EAP program to create that, and we value you guys for trusting us enough to create a valued EAP program that is being utilized more than it ever was before to prevent accidents before they happen, and get rid of that stuff so people can enjoy a good, long retirement. So thank you for giving us that last time. But we'd like to stay committed in those areas to make sure that people can have a good, healthy retirement. And then last time, clarifying contract language, we've already begun on that, we've been very good. We are always the first to step up with our, when we have an issue that we see that there's something there, it's the very first thing that we address coming into a contract issue. We're never people that stand by and say, nope, this is the way we've done it, we're going to stay there and dig our heels in. We're the first ones to say, absolutely, let's find a reason to go. And with our commitment from DeeDee, I really think that we're on that same page again for a long term. So that's what we have there for your time. We thank you for everything that we've done thus far, and we look forward to a good working relationship again.
Mayor and Council, so this is an opportunity, if you do have any questions for either our human resources department, myself, and of course, the association.
Thank you. Well, before, before we move forward with any questions, I do just want to say, welcome back, Hunter. We are glad to see that you are well and appearing at, at the top of your game. Watch out, DeeDee. I think he's ready. So Council, is there any questions or comments? That was a great presentation, and I think we're off to a good start, and there's no doubt that we appreciate our fire department in, in all aspects and all realms, and it's amazing that we've come together as far as we have. And Vicki, are you looking at me because you have a question? Or not?
And you look so nice, but other than that...
I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance.
I don't have a question. I wrote down, the very first thing you said is that our average for firefighters staying with us is 23.7 years.
27, where's the 3?
Okay, and I'm not even dyslexic. Well, 27.3 is even better. I mean, I think that's amazing. I really do. You guys are in a hazardous job, however you want to say it, whether it's one thing or another. It's hazardous, even if it's the PTSD part, you can't unsee certain things that you've seen. And it just makes me feel so proud of our city, and not just council decisions, and not just your pay and your contracts, but of our citizens and the way they feel about you, and the way they treat and appreciate our firefighters, that our firefighters feel welcome here and stay 27, 27.3 years. I, I just think that that's really a, a great recommendation, and the way you treat your fellow, your newbies, even though you do put them through their, their tricks, but a lot of pancake breakfast for those guys. But anyway, just congratulations on keeping them for so long. It's, it's wonderful.
Thank you. I forgot to introduce Chad Corbin, sorry.
I apologize there. He's also our training captain in, in the valley. He serves on our board.